Ready, you ready Chip? Okay, I'd like to call our City Council Workshop for June to order. I want to encourage everyone again, Chip reminded me to make sure all council members turn their mics on and make sure you use your microphone and try not to click your pin. So, anything else specific Chip?
No.
All right, thank you all for being here. First item on the agenda is citizens input, and I have four people that signed in to address the council, so I'll call you up just as you signed in. First is Elena Legg. So yeah, just approach the podium there.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
My concerns, if it's okay to talk about Queener Road.
Sure.
Is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much for listening. My concerns are the infrastructure. Normally when you have cities that start growing, that's the last thing that they think about to take care of. With the new subdivision coming in, the gentleman mentioned 72 homes possibly, and that would average 144 cars going up and down that road. The schools, of course, will increase with students, and I feel that we also need red lights since that's going to have more traffic. With the developers starting possibly this year or the beginning of next, it has been told to us that Queener Road would take two years, so we would be dealing with these issues at hand. And that's all I wanted for you guys to think. Usually when cities change different things, it's when someone loses their life on the road. And I just don't want that to happen.
I don't think any of us do. Thank you for coming and addressing your concerns.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you ma'am.
Steve Legg? You're smart, you let her come first.
I didn't know, I was like that, so. Yeah, she addressed some concerns. I have done some research with T-Dot. I do know that Queener Road's on the books slated between now and '23. But I guess my question is, when are they going to start? That's my question to y'all.
Major Ross, you want to just know, say what you know about it as far as...
Sure. The budget increased on that project, and it's an 80/20 project with T-Dot, 20% being local, and we have a formal request into T-Dot for increased expenditures to cover the increased budget amount. Those talks are going well. We have nothing in writing, it's all verbal at this point, but we have very strong assurances. And when you will see this come to fruition is an amendment to the existing T-Dot contract for the construction of new Queener Road later this summer.
So, in the meantime, I mean, Queener Road's falling apart.
In the meantime, we all suffer together, and I feel your pains, sir.
Mm-hmm. So, we've got a new development coming in, and that's fine, you know, it's going to bring money and everything else, but in the meantime, your road, that road's going to take a beating. You're going to have equipment coming in. Chances are, it's going to be developed prior to the road even getting started, so then, you know, as my wife stated, you're going to have increased traffic. I have spoke with safety director at T-Dot, and basically he told me for every house, you multiply it by 10. That's how much traffic's going to be added to Queener Road. So, if you take 70 homes, you're looking at 70 vehicles, or 700 vehicles, I'm sorry, every day. That road's not going to hold up. I've sent pictures in, I can share whatever you guys would like, but I don't know, do any of you all travel Queener Road at all?
Yeah.
Okay, so you know how beat up it is. You know, I drive a pickup truck, there's another truck coming, I got to get over to the side. No getting around that, it's just going to get worse. It's going to cave in. And unfortunately, the, you know, the director, that's what he told me, he said, "A lot of times, it takes fatalities before anything that's done." So, I mean, I'm just addressing some concerns, and, you know, I'll keep in touch with T-Dot and try to push and...
Please do.
I mean, you know, that's all we can do, but...
That's all we can do, and that's what we're doing. Appreciate you coming and addressing your concerns tonight. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Pettit, you're next on the list?
I didn't know I signed up to speak here first either.
You sure did.
I know it's just a sign-in sheet. I know I've got the first two agenda items here, and mainly come to answer questions that the council may have.
Okay.
But, and I hear everybody what they're saying on the Queener Road too. We've had a couple of meetings. We had one meeting with the neighborhood association here in this building, and it was a good meeting. After the meeting, I think everyone understood, you know, exactly what was taking place. We got rid of a lot of rumors, a lot of mistruth. I actually had a phone call today from a realtor that said, you know, "Hey, you know, low-income HUD houses are coming," and they were concerned about building or buying one of the houses being built up on top of the hill. Don't know where the stuff started, but that's absolutely not happening. I've never had any discussion with anybody regarding HUD home or, you know, that type of stuff. Total open book with everything that I've been doing. So, but it was a good meeting from the standpoint of explaining the development process, timelines, things of that nature. We're so far into this year right now, we've, you know, even if we are to get the zonings that we are seeking, we can't start this year. You know, we're another month and a half from zoning, or another 30 days after that for engineering, and then we're about 45 to 60 days for all permitting. And I just won't start a development if I can't get vegetation growing, you know, before October. If, you know, after October, if you're not planted by then, and we're just going to fight mud all winter long. And we've got, we've got the creek down there on the Queener Road project that I just wouldn't want to take any kind of chances of any type of, you know, siltation or anything like that. So, we're next spring at the earliest, and then those, those projects will take about six months to do, to do those, to turn them over to the home builder, and then the home builder will be about five months after that. So, you're looking at, you're looking at late next year before folks will start moving into those, those projects. I'm mainly here to answer city council's questions more than anything. We've got two different projects, two different starting zones, both seeking the R3. On the Queener Road project, it's zoned to R1 right now, and one of the things, one of the big things we talked about with the, with the folks who live next door is, you know, we can do townhomes, multifamily there right now, and the builder would love to do that. It's, it's also in need for Loudon, there's such a deficit of affordable homes that, you know, so many residents has expressed their concerns and not being able to find housing, you know, in the 200 to 250, 275 range, and they're moving out of town and then driving back for work and those types of things. Well, we've covered a whole host of those things, but right now, we can put a lot of units in there. There's about 30 acres, but nine of it's on the other side of the creek, and, you know, as it is with the square footage calculations, we can do about four and a half units, an acre for almost 20 acres. So, it's a whole lot more units.
Multifamily.
Multifamily. I thought in the beginning, the town needed exactly what we're trying to bring in here because we study what, what the average incomes are. And these homes are for families, household income anywhere from $60,000 to $90,000, and that, that kind of hits right in the heart of what, you know, the majority of the two people working household is, is after here. So, that's, that's why we suggested R3 in the beginning, but we're okay with the R1. We're fine with it if, if that doesn't work out, but I think after talking to the Queener Road Hampton Place folks, they would rather see the R1. I'll let them speak for themselves if you'd like to ask them. We've had some other things that we were able to address with those folks. The previous developer on the Hampton Place left that subdivision with the roads just chopped. There's, there's no cul-de-sac, there's no turnaround, so the people that lives last on the street, you know, you've got people turning around in their, in their drives all the time, and we think we might have a solution to be able to solve that. We firstly tried to talk about maybe adding cul-de-sacs if we didn't lose lots, and I'll help these folks any way I can, but, but now, we're kind of the opinion if, if we develop the additional acreage, even though it'll be a separate subdivision, we'll stay separate, neither subdivision will encroach on each other in regards to covenants, restrictions, those types of things. We can still continue the road pattern. So, it would answer the fire safety, the, you know, the things where you got to turn around, it will answer that. So, we would have essentially two entrances, and I've got the original development plan, and I don't know if you folks have had an opportunity or you've ever seen the original development plan. The original development plan on the Queener Road called for 102 lots. What we're proposing, it's 113. The biggest difference in the two is the, the original development plan with the 102 lots, it took those lots all the way to the creek bank. And so, there's a lot of flood area down in the bottom. We're preserving that area. We're not having any fee simple part of our lots that encroaches down in that floodplain area. And I've mentioned to you, Mayor, and, and I think, I think maybe Ty, we've, we've spoke about it, there's, there's going to be about 15 acres that I'm just not going to develop. And it's, and it's that beautiful flood area that, it floods two or three times a year, and then it's all along the side of the creek, and then there's another nine acres on, on the other side of the creek that borders the park. If the city would like to have that property to increase your park, you know, I can see a bridge going across the creek, trails up and down, and, and the whole city be able to use the property, but if the city doesn't want that, we can certainly develop it into a common area to where both subdivisions are able to continue to have use of that natural area. But I, I think we all agree that as far as on our side, the more people that could use it, the better, but if the city for whatever reason does not want to take that, then, then it can just be common area for that, for that subdivision. So, let me show you what I'm talking about, maybe a visual would be a little bit easier than my explanation on the current development plan, the way it was approved back then.
Thanks.
Right now, from there.
You can hang that out.
No, okay, I got it.
You sure?
That first page is the original development plan of Hampton Place, and the highlighted area is what actually got plotted. And so, if you'll go to the second sheet, that, that was our original development plan of how we came in, and you can see how those two kind of fit together like a puzzle piece. But we took our roads and we kind of cul-de-sacked them because one of the original concerns from Hampton Place was they did not want increased traffic through their subdivision, and so, you know, we were standalone. We did, did our own two entrances there at the, at the, at the Queener Road. But after further consideration and kind of learning what we're doing, you know, having an opportunity to see how the houses are starting to shape up and look up on top of the hill on Cedar, I think the consensus is, is they would like for those roads just to extend on through and look just like the original site plan, and we can do something very, very, very close to that, but we're still not going to go down into the creek area, the flood, flood area. And so, that's sort of an answer to solving some problems of past eels of a, of whatever happened to that subdivision. I don't know, I don't even know who developed it, but that, that may solve some of their problems. But that's kind of what we're, what we're looking to do right there, and I don't think, and I've not visited with my engineer since, me and Mr. Damian yesterday spoke about this. I've been burning roads up the last couple of days. I've had a death in the family up in Kentucky, so I'll come back tonight for this meeting. I'm heading right back out soon as we get done, but when I can get my engineer to go ahead and redesign this to look in, I'm looking at it by eye, I don't think we're going to lose any lots at all, and we, we don't care if we join their roads or not. If it helps them, they want to do it, and it works out for everybody, we're tickled to do that. So, just another, another thing that we might be able to come to some sort of consensus and, and help our neighbor out, and because we're, we're going to, we're going to develop the property, and we hope to do it with what everybody would like to see around it.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, sir. And I'm, do you want me to sit down now, or do y'all have any other questions?
We'll ask a question if we can, come to it on the agenda.
All right.
Next is Susan Clipple. Okay, thank you.
Well, Elena and Steve probably said what I'm going to say. I couldn't, I couldn't hear them, but I live in Hampton Place, of course, and of course, don't want that development there, but at any rate, the biggest concern is, well, it's all those people and pollution and cars, but Queener Road is only 26 feet wide, you know, and it's so much traffic and big farm equipment and trailers and tractors and school buses. Well, we can't have a development with all those hundreds of people. How are we even going to get out on 72? You know, it's already busy out there, and I, I just don't, I don't think until Queener Road is repaired, that this shouldn't even come up on this development. It shouldn't come up. I mean, people's lives are in danger, children's lives are, and it's not right. It's just not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all the ones that signed up to, to speak. Thank you all for coming, for addressing...
I have several people on Zoom, I don't know if anyone needs to...
Okay, sure, if you can...
Everyone.
No one raised their hand, they just, you just have several on there. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address council? Everyone is unmuted?
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. And thank you for your addressing the council tonight. There will have more discussion as we get to those items. Speaking of which, the first item for consideration is the Cedar Park Drive, C4 to R3. This has been discussed for a couple of months, and this is not the Queener Road development, this is the development actually up behind Burger King. So, the Loudon Regional Planning Commission has recommended this, I think it was unanimous, correct Commissioner?
It was.
For the property at Cedar Park Drive from C4 interchange commercial district to R3 urban residential district. Major Ross, do you have anything to add to? We've discussed it pretty thoroughly.
No, it's a, it's a larger but mirror image of what you see there now, just on the other side of the road. What is new this evening, and this is, this has been on your agenda for a while, but what is new is the, is the proposed subdivision, I'm sorry, rezoning before proposed subdivision on Queener Road, as well as a proposed RV park on Corporate Park Drive.
Those are the two new items.
Those make up the three rezoning requests.
So, remember, this, this rezoning request is first reading, so if it's, we'll open it up for discussion on the Cedar Park Drive, C4 to R3. Any comments from council, any discussion on it?
I'm going to stay with my original stance on it until we do an engineer traffic impact study. I can't support it.
I think at this time, isn't it, what, 13,000 cars at T-Dot?
I'm not talking about cars getting off the interstate, Jeff. I'm talking about cars coming out of that subdivision trying to get on 72.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, what the difference?
We need to do, there's, there are engineering companies in Knoxville that specializes in traffic studies. They do the study, we follow the recommendations of what they say. If they say we need three traffic lights, the developer puts us up three traffic lights cleared through T-Dot. It's, it happens every day in developments. We can't put this subdivision in, and we've got seven entrances right there within 200 yards of each other, and you can't get out on the road now. What's going to happen when you add 400 more cars or 200 more cars trying to get out on one street? It just, it won't work, and I'm not going to wait for a death for it to happen.
Okay, any other discussion, any other...
You, you and I spoke about that.
Yeah, just make sure you use your mind.
And did you ever talk to the developer about a buffer zone between some of the housing that was faced on Queener Road?
Councilman James, that conversation came up here in a meeting, and, and what I did is I, I took it to the county planning office and the planning commission and proposed an amendment to our zoning ordinance that should be sponsored by you that would not allow those two zoning uses to be, to be side by side, such as you're discussing now. That was voted upon by the planning, planning commission, to the best of my recollection, and it was, it was denied.
Yes. It was, I think that...
So, there will be no buffer or anything like that?
No. The rezoning approved by the planning commission was without a buffer.
Yeah. And I think it was a unanimous...
It was.
...defeat or something.
Well, I can see why it would be unanimous. I can understand that.
But it did come up.
This property's already zoned C4. A Walmart can go in there and build right now, and I ran Walmarts in the past, some of you know. I've been doing this for 15 years, and a Walmart creates over 60,000 transactions a week. That one in Illinois City is doing more than that. So, there's 13,000 cars on this road right where the entrance comes. This is a state road, not a city road, it's a state road. It's not a county road, it's a state road. I've been doing site selection work for many years for corporate entities, and we barely touched the scales on being able to bring anything on that road right now. I put the Bojangles there, I put the Burger King there, and I could have gone through countless of other folks. 13,000 cars don't cut it. Plus, that 13,000 car road right there has a continuous turn lane, and it has a right-hand turn lane. What would you do in addition? It's not close to a, to a traffic study saying you're going to have to do something else. I guarantee it. I'll guarantee it so much as to make a bet, to make a donation to the cost of what that thing would, 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 to do, that you're just throwing money, you're going to ask me to throw money down to do, is what you're going to do. I'll donate the money that would cost to do the traffic study to any charity that you want, if I'm right. It's not close, guys, it's not close. 13,000 cars don't bring in additional restaurants. It's not going to bring in, and right after the restaurant's in, your traffic count falls to nothing. It's not even, you know, so it's just that interstate exchange right there. That was all zoned, and curb cuts have already been issued from T-Dot for that commercial property. At that time, when those curb cuts come in, that's, that's when T-Dot addresses that stuff. So, another restaurant coming down from Burger King or whatnot, they have to apply for a curb cut, and then T-Dot's going to say, "But you're going to have to do something else. You're going to have to share an entrance, or, you know, you need to do an additional turn lane," you know, that's when that stuff happens, not with what's already there and what's already zoned coming out of that commercial development. The Cedar Park, you know, if all of that developed out into commercial, I mean, the traffic counts would be 10 times of what these homes are going to generate, or they wouldn't be in business, any type of commercial thing. So, I, I hear and I understand the traffic thing, but I've been doing this for so long, and I've done site selection work, to say that this ain't even in the ballpark, it's not even close to having to do any type of red light thing or anything right there in that 72 area. I just, I...
Unless you get an engineer to sign off on it and agree that, and, you know, if the engineer's responsible enough to say this is not going to impact, that's fine.
A zoning and a traffic study don't go hand in hand legally.
Exactly.
Okay, they, it's, it's when it's development plan time. Those two things don't talk to each other.
I do know better that we have traffic engineers that do this kind of work. If we got that many entrances to Highway 72 within 150, 200 yards of each other, it's going to have an impact. It already does. Come down to Loudon, sit out, sit out there all day.
I'm there, I'm working here every day. I'm here, I know, I'm there. I just, I'm not in favor of throwing money away at something that's just not even close to them, I'm just not. And it doesn't have anything to do with the zoning. It has to do with the development plan. Right now, Walmart can go in there. We're not going to do a tenth of a Walmart, we're not going to do a tenth of any kind of commercial thing that takes up 25 acres. Don't ask me to spend money after bad when I'm trying to be so good to this city. I'm putting my guts, my hard work, I've, I've been two years trying to provide and, and bring up this city in, in ways that you don't know. You know, I'm wanting to add to your park, don't ask me to spend $7,000 for nothing. I'd rather give it to a Boys and Girls Club, I'd rather give it to somebody that can use it instead of throwing it in the garbage.
If we could get council to agree, would you split the cost on it?
Absolutely, yeah, and, and let's say, if it's wrong, the other one goes ahead and makes that donation, and I'll double the donation, because I know I'm right.
And you'll follow, and you'll follow the guidelines of that study?
Absolutely.
At your expense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or I won't do the project, because, and that's, that's just the way it is, but you're, you're spending the taxpayers' money in a bad way, I'm just telling you. I'm just telling you. It's 13,000 cars, it's nothing. It's nothing. I mean, it's not, it's not close.
I know I've talked to Jack Claus about it as well, and he agrees that...
It's not close.
The number.
There's a continuous turn lane and a right turn lane. What, I mean, what do you do?
There's a difference between numbers and common sense. Common sense, if you go out there and sit and watch all these cars and all these people trying to get on 72, I don't care what kind of stats you have, there's a big difference.
All three of these rezonings intersect Highway 72. What would the scope of the traffic study be?
The effect on traffic from the northbound or southbound exit ramp all the way to Queener Road. What kind of impact is all these homes going to add? And what would be the recommendations of this engineer if it was two traffic lights or three traffic lights, or closing down some of those entrances and not having two or three entrances into Kentucky Fried Chicken or any of those, have one entrance with a traffic light?
Is, is the proposed rezoning at Corporate Park Drive included or excluded from the traffic study?
Included.
I got nothing to do with any of that, and I will not agree to it, flat out. I got nothing to do with Kentucky Fried Chicken, I got nothing to do with Corporate Park Drive.
I'm talking about the traffic from...
I got nothing to do with any of that, okay?
You're, you're getting off track.
No, I'm not, and I don't think legally you can require me to do a traffic study for a zoning. I don't think you can do that.
Legally, where, where the legislation bottomed the city?
No, the planning commission can require that, you can't.
Plan, you're wrong.
Okay, well, we'll find, let's just ask that too, because I'm trying to do...
I'm working with you, Brian.
No, you're not. You're saying you're going to do this, or I don't support it. That's not working with me. I, I don't care, it's not...
If you're so confident with what the engineer's going to say, let's just go with it.
Let's make a bet.
Come on, man.
Let's make a bet, let's, let's, let's help some kids somewhere instead of throwing it down the tubes. Let me, let me donate to the Boys and Girls Club, let, let me, let me improve the park. Let me do something good for Loudon instead of paying somebody money that is absolutely not going to be close. Let me do that. Let's, let's, let's structure it where I can do something good with the money.
Well, Will, any other discussion comments from any of the council members about this rezoning for Cedar Park Drive? Again, this is just for first reading. It would come up first reading in two weeks, which doesn't put it into... It would come up first reading in two weeks, which doesn't put it into motion. It's still got to go through one more, one more reading in July.
I, we had this conversation, and, and you clarified this question for me, but I just want the public to know as well that there's still going to be an area on 72 that's going to be safe for corporate business, correct?
Yeah, the C4 is still in the front.
Just the road frontage. And, and I, I shared with Tim, I, I, we drove him around, and, and to me logically, coming across Corporate Park Drive, straight across the road is an opportunity to have one curb cut suit two businesses. But I don't make that decision. Tim don't make that decision. This is a state, state thing. But logically, I could see that's what they would like for us to do or for anybody to do because it won't be me. It's not me. This is, this is whoever will be buying that property will apply for a curb cut. This don't have anything to do with me.
That stays C4.
Yeah.
We're not developing, we aren't developing all the way to the, to 72. That will be saved.
Right, from, from a tech-
And it'll be a large enough area for a business to go into. You said the same as what Burger King and Bojangles has right now?
We're saving the same depth and creating relatively the same sized lots in, in hopes that, that Loudon can continue to grow right down 72 with, with, you know, individual restaurants or, you know, whatever would be appropriate down through there.
I think the property owners requested that stay C4.
Right. That was, that was one of my concerns.
Yes.
The previous time this was on the agenda.
Pushing back behind that. Any other questions about this particular development?
What kind of elevations are you going to have on that Cedar, Cedar Park development? As far as topographical, anyway? Because I know it pretty well. I know how it looks.
Yes, sir. Uh, and you, you understand where we are doing the phase one up there. We saved that back part. There's, there's two and a half, two, three quarters acres on the right side at the top of the hill that we did not develop because of when the sewer was put in, we would have to pump up to that sewer there. But it will gravity flow all the way to 72 from there. So what we'll do is we'll raise and lower everything where we've got gradual, gradual flow. As you see, all of these homes are pad homes. You know, they're all concrete pad homes. They're, they're not crawl space homes. So, uh, our dirt calculations are right at 100,000 cubic yards of dirt that we will move to almost, almost level this thing with a slight grade going to 72 so we-
You're going to bring 21 acres up, sort of elevation of, of where you're building now. Is that what you're saying?
No. No. The back two and a half acres at the top of the hill to the right that, that we did not, that's still higher than 72 is now.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
And so we just have to have, we just have to have a gravity flow. And when we, uh, when we do our road profiles-
And also drain, all, that, that's a drainage for all of that.
Yeah.
What are you going to do with that drainage?
Well, it'll all be detention pond. That, that, you know, Hampton Place don't have a detention pond. I can't believe it. We, we detain all every bit of-
The other bit down the river, creek.
Yeah, but I, we don't, you can't do that anymore.
Well, I don't know. That, that's, the weather will matter.
The, the, the guidelines with-
You've got an amen and an ale in there, Brian.
The guidelines with T-Deck, and we can't engineer it any other way now. The guidelines with T-Deck is whatever water flows anywhere offside, we can't increase that. It has to be that or less. And so when you put the streets in, you put the rooftops in, we have to retain all of that water. It all has to be retained. We cannot put more water than what is right now.
Big amounts of Loudies have gone and done that by underground drains, increased size of underground drains. They sure were underground. It's, we've already done that out there where McDonald's is.
On, on commercial, you're saying a lot of that is commercial.
We put an 8-inch underground drain in there.
Mm-hmm.
Because the water run off. We had to do something with it.
Most, most places, if you're going to disturb an acre of land for, for any type of business right now, they're requiring detention ponds in, in, in most areas. I'm not sure what's required here, but, uh, you know, I know that we've got a lot that is, has not done that. Uh, but, you know, the law is-
Right through that area, that was all, you know, it runs all the way down and opens up down there next to the creek in front of the, in front of the car lot down there. And that thing is, uh, 32 feet deep or so.
We, we won't get, we won't get grading permits if our calculations show more water going on neighboring properties. It's, they-
But I was just curious because, you know, you've got the old pond sites, both of them.
Yeah.
And you've got to do something about those to, to reclaim them.
Well, that, we'll, what, what will happen in, in those areas, we'll dig all of those out, all the way down to Red, repack the Red up, and, and in the meantime, we're lowering, lowering what's beside of it too. It all comes up to where you, that thing's going to look like that.
But I understand that.
It'll be, it'll be flat as that paper when we're done. There's a hundred-
Hodges property and a different Knoxville property, all of that is lower than all of that. Hodges and all of them. So you're, you're going to have a cut bank there?
I think Hodges is higher.
And that's what I'm saying. Yours is lower.
Yeah.
Hodges is higher.
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to have a cut bank there to cut and fill. Is that what you're going to do?
Absolutely.
You're going to lower your elevation?
Absolutely.
If you're going over on the other side. That's what I thought.
Yeah. It, it, it will, it will look, I mean, it will look nice. I mean, it's, it'll almost be tabletop by the time we get done.
That's why I asked you, do you have, has your engineer gave you any idea of what kind of elevation it's going to be on?
You haven't had it engineered yet.
We, I'm, you know, it-
Waiting to get it rezoned.
I've done dirt calculations. We've done layout.
I know all that down there for grades.
Yes, I know.
I know what the topographical is on. I know what it is. And so that's why I'm asking these questions because you're going to break the road out, I understand, between the detention pond and the last house you're building. Is that where you're going to break the road out and come out into the, into the exit?
No.
Where's it going to come out at?
Burger King. The detention pond at Burger King and some of that up there is using?
Yeah.
Then there's a lot right behind that detention pond?
Yes, sir.
That, that's where we're going into it.
With the road. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's where we're going into the 25 acres.
Your house and then our detention pond where it is.
Okay. Yes, sir.
It's where that-
But that detention pond, that detention pond won't be used by us. That's, that's something for, for what's already there. Our detention ponds, we'll, we'll probably have four or five detention ponds in, in that area. But naturally, they're going to be in the lower, lower areas. There'll be one down, you know, in the bottom part because you've got to catch that last, and then there'll be some that comes up. You know, you can't have everything at the bottom because it's, it's a pretty big site. We'll have detention ponds scattered throughout in, in the project, but-
And the same thing will be true on the backside with the guy in Knoxville, the tracker that's got the property. You, you have a cut bank there, too, won't you?
I've not seen the whole cut and fill, uh, plan because we've not done it. We're not going to-
Did you have anybody give you an estimate yardage figure?
Yes, it's almost 100,000 cubic yards.
There'll be a lot of cutting dirt.
That's a lot of dirt.
There'll be a lot of cutting available.
That's, uh, almost-
I made a comment today. I think your cut bank could probably be 15 to 20 foot down on the sides around the edge. I believe it will be.
You know, we cut and fill 40 feet up in Knoxville.
That's one thing.
It's, I mean, it's, it's not, that's what we do.
Now, you're going to slope it or you're going to put a detention pond up? What are you going to do?
We'll slope it. Everything will be two to one.
Two to one, three to one?
Two to one. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any, any other questions about Cedar Park Drive?
Yeah, I have a question. This may come to the citizens to answer this, so we are available.
Is this about Cedar Park Drive, not Queen of Road?
I'm sorry, Queen of Road.
Okay, we'll get that.
I thought we were talking about those.
No, we'll get that one next. Any more questions about the Cedar Park Drive? I think a lot of times these two developments are getting mixed, lumped in together. Right now, we're just talking about the Cedar Park Drive. Okay? That'll show up on our, uh, agenda in two weeks for first reading. Next one is rezoning requests. Queen of Road, R1 F1 to R3 F1. And this also comes as a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. Property's owned by Gary and Cynthia Clemens. Queen of Road, tax map, O40 parcel listed there and going from suburban residential district to urban residential district. Okay? Your comment?
You ready now? Sorry. Got ahead of myself. Um, earlier, you said you had the meeting with the citizens here, and I don't know if I heard you wrong or if it was said, but what, what are the citizens wanting? It's R1 right now, so that means multifamily or townhomes can go on it. If we, if we, because it's, it's going to be one or the other. It's going to be R1 or it's going to be R3?
Damien is one of the presidents of the, of the HOA. I would love for him to, to speak, so I don't speak for them. Love him to have an opportunity to surface himself there.
Looks like Damien delegated.
During our meeting, and I guess since I've been going back and forth between me and Brian, uh, they've decided that they would prefer single-family homes. What Brian brought up earlier is, uh, turning the houses to coincide with what's already there. Also helps with our infrastructure problems. Hold cold to sex, it's just not going to happen, most likely. I mean, it'll be, it'll just be more beneficial for, for both, um, for both subdivisions. And I guess if there's safety measures in, in place as far as, um, maybe with a speed humps or roundabouts or something to slow the speed of traffic. And I think the traffic, as far as going back and forth, would be kind of a wash anyway.
Yeah. I mean, we, it's, it's bad that they've got roads in there now that's just dead ends.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, trash truck, fire truck, nothing can get in there. They got to back out for everything they do. So what Brian's proposing is to hopefully fix that. If you don't lose any lots, fix that, you know? Tie that together, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so what you're saying is you're okay with it?
Uh, yeah, pretty much. As long as everything works out the way me and Brian have discussed, it pretty much would be, the pros would outweigh the cons, pretty much.
Because like I say, I think it came up in the HOA meeting that it can be developed now. R1, it don't need our approval for that. It, it's set to be zoned that way anyway. So multi, multifamilies could actually go in there if this class submitted to planning commission and they'll be able to rezone it. Right.
And he was talking about the roundabouts and talking about speed bumps. Uh, it's all sort of different scenarios could be, uh, about in that area. So, you know, as long as they work together.
And also a common area you, you had mentioned as far as maybe something common that both developments could benefit from.
Make sure that they got access to, I mean, we-
Yeah.
We're, we're working good together. And we, we, you know, we've, we've got, you know, all the right agreements to be good neighbors. Uh, you know, I mean, actually, they don't want, they'd rather see the green field if they, I mean, I, I get that. I understand that. Uh, but, you know, this won't be developed and, and, but we don't want bulldog through there and do what, I mean, we want to do what we can do to help them, to be good neighbors, help some of the situations that they've got, the city's got. Uh, you know, our timing, I don't think it's going to be terribly bad from when the Queen of Road comes in. I mean, we're still, we're still a year and a half off from, you know, even, even, well, about a year and a half off, I think, before you're going to see anybody moving up there. Uh, you know, the park, before we get to our subdivision, it's not 100 yards, you know, from Queen of Road. And hopefully all of that takes place and gets improved. Uh, you know, the two, two developments along it's going to be right about $47 million in construction. I mean, you're looking at a couple hundred people working and spending money here. You're looking at $375,000 in property tax alone, you know, sales taxes and things like that. You know, I see these meetings where, you know, this COVID has hurt so many communities. It's going to hurt the taxation because of things being shut down. I see county commission trying to, you know, push you guys out on your own for, for planning. I, I see, you know, a lot of other, you know, cuts coming in. We're, we're trying, we're trying to bring that tax base back and, you know, product that, that's, that people are screaming for. And so, guys, I live here. I'm a Loudon County. I've been here for 20 years and, and I'm not going to scorch the earth and leave here. I got a reputation that, that I want to keep. And so, uh, you know, I want to do what's due for Loudon.
I think we'd all agree we need housing. I think it's-
Right. I don't think that anybody disagrees.
I agree 100%. We need housing, but let's look at the big picture too.
But, but don't, don't think that the Queen of Road issue falls on deaf ears. This council has been very determined on fixing roads, and we've pushed that Queen of Road project. Unfortunately, that's also a project with the state that, I mean, sometimes you just can't push the state any faster than they'll go, but we have pushed that project as well.
And I think it being a federal project too is, is the main thing.
Right. Sorry.
It'll be hit down.
So that's, you know, that's not on deaf ears. That's something we're pushing, and, and honestly, I kind of hope that with this subdivision coming in, that may get pushed a little, little harder, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that'll show up on, any more discussion on that particular development?
Sandra, did you have anything?
I had something. I'm sure I have. One of mine is, is the, were the kind of lane stops on 72 to turn on Queen of Road? I mean, if there were a stop, you, you were trying to turn on Queen of Road and people have people arrange you on the side of the road?
Well, Queen of Road's going to have a whole nother-
And that, that's going to extend, the, the turn lane's going to extend out.
Well, there's going to be another, there's going to be a separate exit off of 72, off of, um, 72 to Queen of Road.
Yeah, but there's no turn in or out, turn lane in that, that area she's talking about.
I mean, now, not-
It just goes away.
Because the interstate is not familiar with our area. Well, they're going, and all of a sudden, they're in this left lane going toward Loudon to turn it around, you know, and I think they're still in a turn lane. Why that turn lane stops is dangerous. Very dangerous. Very dangerous.
We just need, we need to do some traffic research on it.
Hopefully they get Queen of Road fixed. That will solve some of that because it's going to go all, all the way down.
The turn lane will?
I mean, I haven't seen it, but I think that's what's proposed.
That was on the.
Sir, you had another question?
The, uh, the money that's going to be generated from the construction. Is there an area to put that into an escrow? That would go towards Queen of Road. That right there would solve the problem. You've got a gap with money unless you've already had that money spent elsewhere.
I think we've got the.
We've got the funding for Queen of Road.
The monies.
We're waiting on the state.
Like you said, we got a gap, that's what you told me when I was standing out there a minute ago.
Well, I think that gap's been addressed, correct manager Ross? I mean, it's.
It'll be addressed in the form of an amendment.
Yeah.
Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Yeah, okay.
But that's already been sent in, the amendments already been sent in, right?
The request, yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, that'll show up on the agenda in two weeks for, again, that'll be first reading. Just got to go through two readings. Uh, the next is a rezoning request, Corporate Park Drive, R1, F1 to C2, F1. And this comes from Loudoun Regional Planning Commission, the rezone of property at 10250 Corporate Park Drive, consistent of 73 acres from suburban residential district to highway business district, floodplain district. So this is what I think manager Ross mentioned earlier, RV park, correct?
Yeah, it was presented to the planning commission and approved as a, as an RV park. Um, the presenter came from Austin, Texas. Uh, he presented it as glamping, high, high-end camping. And, um, they're, they showed existing parks, uh, that they manage throughout the country. They include swimming pools and clubhouses, various amenities like that.
Gated community, I think.
Yeah, this council approved guidelines for RV parks, uh, to be developed within the city of Loudoun. And, um, and those type of, that amenities and, and planning features are, are addressed in your ordinance.
Now, this evidently is a growing trend that is getting a lot of momentum and we didn't have anything to address it. We, we adopted a zone a month or so ago and this is.
This park, you can't come into this park and, and tend to live there. You only have 29 days that you can stay in the park. You've got to move. Then we're going to have, uh, homes in there that, I've got my own, and it'll be stationary that will be rentable. And that'll be in one certain area. Uh, so you'll not be able to come and camp, get a job here, work here and stay there. You've got to move back for 29 days.
That's the limit of the ordinance that you passed. Typically in establishments like this, folks change, stay from a, from a Friday to a Sunday or from a Saturday to a Monday. It's, the price point is such where it's cost prohibitive for most people to stay there 29 days.
Yeah, I think the lady said average around three to four days is usually the length of stay for some people. Any question about this rezoning request? Okay, that'll appear on our agenda in two weeks as well for, on first reading. Do we need to go ahead and set those? Okay. Next item is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
The key, key nature of the budget as, as currently drafted is its static nature in response to the uncertainty that continues to surround the pandemic. Uh, while there's no cost of living adjustment allocated for, we have budgeted a marked increase of $260,210 in employer contribution to the city employee share of our health benefit fund. Uh, the only new bit, spending will focus on high priority investments in our community, including construction of a new Queen of Road, repavement, uh, replacement of a 25-year-old apparatus for the fire department, paving of most of Loudoun's non-state route streets through a debt issuance, patrol car computers for Loudoun Police Department and a, a leaf machine for fall pickup for the Loudoun Public Force Department.
Okay, any questions about the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget and items discussed here?
In the utility board meeting, I expressed a thought about getting a, something together, about a 1% pay increase. And Jason referred to me that he is working on that and he will get that to us, have a look at that, see what possibly might be done.
You can do that for city and utility?
We'll do that for both and since there's two weeks between now and your, and your meeting, I don't think there's any need to wait until then. We'll go ahead and email that out.
Okay. All right.
I'm still not crazy about the debt issuance with the, another year of that other one left on us at the high rate because we'll be paying more payments this first year. And this is a, it's just very unlike any other year that we've ever had. So I'm still a little leery of that. I'm still a little leery of the paving of all the Loudoun's roads all at once. Um, I don't think it's going to get done all at once. I think that's a little bit misleading to the citizens because everybody's going to want their road done this year. And I don't, I don't think that's how it's going to play out.
No, it'll take a couple of seasons, I think.
I think there's a little, little miscommunication on that. There, they all, there's no way they can all get paved in one year.
And again, this is, this is just going into the budget. It's just a budget number. It'll still come back for us to approve these items, you know, individually.
It would have to be a two-year program.
Right, if, well, if we do the debt issuance, that money will be set aside just for paving, right? Cannot be took out for anything else.
No. It's part of the debt obligation. It has to be put in a separate fund.
And we will have the funds to make the higher, the two high payments for this first year.
Yes, our current year budget allows it.
I think according to what you shared with us, this, as far as payment goes, we're in a good position now to do that as far as our budget.
Everything as is, this is the summary, everything as is, with the debt issuance, there's still revenues in excess of expenditures of $64,000. And that takes into account the long, the debt service on that $4 million. There are some other items that will impact this $64,000. That's detailed on the discuss to be decided. Um, the first responder pay, the 1% increase that's been brought up tonight, that impacts it. But prior to this meeting, with the debt issuance and being able to repay 90% of the city streets, there was $64,000 left in the budget after we did that.
After we did that, yeah. We, I attended a, an MTS class with other city managers throughout East Tennessee and we were guided, uh, in response to COVID-19 and the, the overall economic downturn of what to do and when. And Allen Major, uh, finance professor at the University of Tennessee, who leads the Certified Municipal Planning Officer Certification classes, um, told us point blank. He said, now's the time to go issue debt. It'll never be cheaper and this is when you need to get it done.
Okay, any other discussion about the fiscal year budget?
Also at this time, I want to go ahead and talk about, in our police department, we've got two different, we've got a patrol, a police patrol officer, and then we got a police patrol officer, entry level position. Uh, you know, I just don't understand why you've got, uh, I know why they got it and when it happened, but, uh, that's like having a two-tiered program for your entry-level police officers. Uh, I just don't feel like that's doing them justice. And, uh, you've got one that has worked for, I'm assuming he's been there maybe four years or so, that is, uh, not where even close to being talked out with the normal police officer pay. And then you've got two more that's been put into that position. Those don't tell them how long it's going to take them to possibly get up there if ever. So I'm, I'm saying we need to do away with that entry-level position that says entry level, number two.
Okay, any?
That would be an amendment to your, um, to your payroll schedule.
We don't know what the financial effects that would be.
I'll have to, we'll research and get a fiscal note to that, uh, what an increase in pay for those two positions would cost, uh, and we'll make that, uh, make that known uh, as a potential amendment to your, to your pay resolution, uh, which should be coming up at your regular meeting this month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion about the budget?
I have one question on the, uh, computers for the patrol cars. Is it just a one-time purchase or are we going to have to buy a program every six months or every year? Is it going to be a recurring expense?
Chief Webb?
The full cost of the, of the program for computers in patrol car, running the software, um, connected via data is $75,000. Um, we discussed this earlier. Uh, councilman James requested that we divide this between two years. That's why you have the 30 some odd thousand dollar figure in front of you. But, um, the only, uh, the only ongoing cost, I believe, is just the renewal of our software licenses, court wear and the ability to do background searches. And that's, how much is that, Chief Webb, per year?
I think the court wear is about $4,000 a year, but it's not included in, basically what we're talking about with the $37,000 this year is purchasing hardware to put in a car. Now each one of those laptops will have the Windows operating system loaded onto it. And, uh, so, you know, maybe years down and over, might be some upgrades to that software. But all of that's basically hardware.
Okay.
So there's no recurring cost to this?
So this, there was something that happened to, some of the hardware that.
These computers will, will wear out over time and they'll need to be replaced.
I'm talking about the programs.
None that I'm aware of.
Yeah, you said it's just hardware expense.
Yeah, it's hardware, the, like I said, the laptops have the, have the operating system loaded.
Already preloaded. Okay, any other question about the budget?
Yeah. I have a question on.
Mr. McAllister, I know, realize this is a pain in the neck, but we have many people listening online via Zoom and they, they requested, I, I've received texts during this meeting for people to use the microphone.
Just so you, I can't hear you, yeah.
It's, it's not working anyway.
Well, I think it's working now, hopefully.
On the Loudoun County.
Hold it up a little closer.
Loudoun County Visitor Bureau, they were appropriated by $5,000 for several years. I didn't see anything that we got from them. Last year, you all voted to give them another $15,000, which brought it up to $20,000. And I don't see anything we've got for that extra $15,000, which I think is money that can be used wisely elsewhere. Can anybody tell me what we've got for that extra $15,000?
Well, I mean, I, I, increase in tourism, I think she, you know, she has increased tourism now. You know, I don't have the numbers in front of me as far as, you know, uh, specific dollar amounts and things like that, but, um, I think she's helped us, you know, promote several events and, and, um, things like that to bring people to. She did help, uh, the $150,000 grant we got for the theater, she was basically the one that helped us with that very much. Uh, I know specifically she was very instrumental in the tourism grant that we spent on the theater.
But other than that.
That's what I know.
We're getting the same thing that we got for $5,000, basically nothing.
Economic development calculations are often criticized. Uh, they're based on heads and beds and then the, the sales tax that's produced when the, when those visitors are in town. And, um, uh, Ms. Baker and the Visitors Bureau, uh, did invest heavily in, in outside programming and advertising, uh, mainly online, uh, through, through different digital outlets to help, uh, help promote our community. This was a difficult fiscal year with COVID-19, this reduction of travel, but.
COVID-19 didn't start in February, this has been since last July.
Again, again, you can debate economic development numbers, um, ad nauseam, but we're in this business for a reason because any visitor that you can bring to our community to spend money, uh, helps reduce, uh, the tax bills of our residents.
I think a way to counter this in the future is to have kind of the same thing that we did with Jack Paul's. We've not really seen that in play, but anybody that we give money to outside of this, so county, we're doing EDA and Visitors Bureau right now at the moment, I think they should have to come report to us just to say, this is what I'm doing right now, this is, here's some advertising that I've done, this is what's coming up in the future. I mean, we're giving that money, we should be able to see what it's doing. And I think that would help a lot with that image. So, um, again, that's something that I would like to see, I would address that before, at least a quarterly report, um, coming to a meeting to explain that quarterly report.
Next item is firefighter pay adjustment.
Yes, this was requested, uh, at our most recent meeting, uh, at the end of May, Vice Mayor Dixon requested, uh, research on pay equity between firefighters and police officers. We ran a couple of scenarios. One is a, is a one-time pay adjustment to all firefighters, uh, to, to increase their pay, uh, even with patrol officers. That scenario would constitute a $175,586 overall increase to the annual budget. We also ran a second scenario, meeting the request with a three-year phase in. That second scenario would constitute a $58,530 overall increase to the annual budget during each of the next three years.
Okay, and you have that table listed in your, your package? You see the figures there and up on the screen? Any discussion on this?
We can create a table similar, similar to this for entry pay patrol officers.
Okay.
I've talked about this several times and now that we have it in front of us, I talked to Chief Brewbaker about it and I told him I would do my best to try to get our firefighters up to where they need to be, to what has been kept from them for years. Uh, at this time, everybody knows what we went through this year, far as not having the funds that we normally have. And I told Chief Brewbaker we probably wouldn't get it all at one time. If we could, great, but, uh, you know, I would be willing to even do the three phases because I know what type of situation we're in. But it'd be great if we could do it all at one time.
I agree with Tim. Our firefighters hadn't slowed down through none of this COVID stuff, hadn't took a break, so, uh, I don't know about the one-time hit, maybe phasing it in.
I mean, it all comes down to money, you know.
So I look at it, it's too little, too late. We shouldn't have, shouldn't have took this long.
Right.
I hate to see them waiting longer. And if we can see any way to pay them at one time, I think we need to.
I agree with that.
That's the bottom line. I mean, you know, if we were a farmer, you know how we'd feel.
All right.
And I, I've known it for a long, long time.
Right.
Twenty years or better. I couldn't understand, nobody could tell me why.
Right.
You know? And that's not, that's not the way you play the game.
Okay, any other?
Can I ask for a clarification on what you would like to see in this ordinance?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to.
I, I need to know which, which way to prepare this. Are we dipping in the fund balance or not?
What, what's our money looking like now? Have you got the reports for, for May?
No, May is not finalized yet, but what we've estimated for this year, um, and we will add to the fund balance this year, are, the ordinance that's on the table that you will vote on in two weeks, right now shows that you would add $64,000 to the fund balance. That's what the budget allows for. And this, if you do the three-year, you're going to reduce that $58,000 or we're going to reduce it $175,000. And there is the other option of a 1% cost of living, which would further reduce how much we go into the fund balance. I need to know how to prepare the ordinance.
If she dips into the fund balance or not?
Chief, how would your guys feel if we had to phase it in?
I think any person followed that, councilman.
I mean, it didn't get this way overnight, like we already, uh, if we could phase it in, this is just a tough year, you know.
If, if this was a normal year, I don't think we would have a problem with that.
No, not whatsoever.
But, but the situation we're in.
We don't know what kind of money we're got coming in.
Uh, so, uh.
That's very true. We are still getting information.
Yeah.
I feel like Johnny does, but I, I feel like that too, because the money's pulling, you know, uh.
So, does everybody feel that she should go with the second scenario as far as preparing?
That would be my support.
I think that would be.
Long as Chief's okay with it.
Get the most support.
This will come to you in two different votes. One is the budget ordinance proper and then the other is the pay schedule. This would be, uh, another amendment to the pay schedule.
Okay.
Just for the audience's benefit, um, the council approves the, um, the headcount and compensation for every city employee. And so we keep a list, we keep a running total of both headcount numbers per, per position and their compensation. The request this evening is to increase that compensation for two particular groups of employees.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, next item is Highland Avenue update.
Ellis tried to dial in and couldn't connect.
I apologize, we're having trouble with Charter and it's statewide. Uh, they're having some bandwidth issues and so folks have tried to log into Zoom, but some have been unable to, uh, including Ellis. But a picture's worth a thousand words and Ellis prepared, prepared this map for you. It's in response to Councilman Brewster's request to lengthen the Highland Avenue project. And what we've shown here is two scenarios. You see a yellow line and a red line. The red line is, is longer, uh, than the, than the yellow line. It runs all the way from Kingston Street, uh, to McAllister Street. The difference in price between the two lengths, uh, the shorter line, the yellow line, is $17,500. And that, that's in the form of a change order, um, with, uh, with Harrison Construction that's out there working on, on Highland Avenue now. And the longer length is, uh, is $26,000.
Is that, are you talking on milling it too or just paving it?
Yeah, just complete, uh, complete extension of the project, the repaving project.
But are they going to mill it?
Yes.
They've already took their equipment.
I'll, I'll bring you, I'll bring you the contracts and I'll have that specified for you, sir.
Okay, does anybody have any?
I think we're fine by going to Kingston Street because if you go on down, there's really no paving issue.
And then you're going to get into.
You can add that later.
Yeah, when we start paving the street.
Paving all the way.
Yeah.
Because you're going to get into Schuber Street right there too.
My question was, was that price, because it really don't need milled either because there's no curbs. So I wondered if a no milling price of $17,000, that's. So I wondered if a no milling price of 17,000, that's pretty expensive.
I'll send you the quote for your review. Okay? So that'll, well, that'll come up in two weeks for us to...
Do we need to amend that?
It'll be complicated. I have never, well, we did this. We did this. We tweaked and amended the Queener Road project, and that delayed it a year. And so, I'm real hesitant to ask TDOT to amend something, especially with the project ongoing. I mean, I have my serious doubts as to whether they'll even consider it. I think for our purposes, we need to plan for the worst, which is we front this cost entirely on our own.
That's what I'm, that's my thought also. And then if we do do the loan, we can pay forward out of that loan, be back into our fund balance or wherever.
Yeah, I just, I don't want that to be the expectation because I have serious doubts.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next item is public work surplus items. So I guess Director Schruggs can't get on, but you see here the things, there's just various items, I think he's listed here.
Yeah, this is, this is the outcome of the recent inventory they took. These items have left a surplus because they feel they no longer need or will use.
Right. So they just need our approval to put them on GOV deals, so.
Is Ellis out of town?
No, he can't. He can't log on, they haven't internet.
We're having internet issues, and Ellis was able...
I was wondering why he wasn't here.
He was intending to log in from Zoom and was unable to.
Any questions about any of those? If not, we'll see that to give him approval for that. Next item is planning zoning. This comes from the Loudoun County Board of Commissioners amendment to the Planning Services Agreement that calls for more money.
After recent reports from the Loudoun County Board of Commissioners, we can expect a request for an amendment to their Planning Services Agreement that calls for more money, approximately $85,000. Our current budget, as presented in this budget ordinance, is, has $25,000 allocated towards planning services. And it's because we have a longstanding, we had a longstanding agreement with the county as an intergovernmental service. And Councilmember Brewster asked that this be brought forward at this workshop for discussion.
What I think, and I think now's the best time to do it, since it's going to cost $85,000, let's go ahead and split these two positions. I think we can have a city manager slash planner cheaper than we can pay $85,000 for a planner alone. That's the going rate. We go ahead and, nobody's getting fired. I'm just talking about splitting the positions so we have, we, there's no way that one person can do the utility board, the city manager, and the planning. So now's just as good as time as any. We go ahead and split these. We've been talking about it. So I'm for splitting those positions, and we hire, when we put it out, when we put the job out, that for the first 30 days, it's people that work for the city. Now, we keep it inside the city. It'll be less expensive that way.
Discussion? I disagree a little bit. I think Manager Ross's office can do all three of those positions, but...
We rarely have more than one, one agenda item per month before the Planning Commission. Thanks to Mr. Pettit, we're fairly busy this month, but that is the exception and not the rule. My background is in real estate. I'm a former real estate attorney. I did inquire with Intas as to what qualifications would be required to, for me to perform these services. And I was told that there were none other than eight hours of training a year. I asked if there was a requirement to be certified with the American Planning Association. Intas said no, there is, there is no requirement. I would counter Mr. Brewster's proposal that we keep the budget as is, and I simply perform these services with a, with a management team. I'd be given the freedom to allocate the $25,000 as I see fit into fulfillment of those management responsibilities for planning services.
I spoke to Manager Ross about that, and I support that recommendation. I think, I think his staff can, can structure it to the point that they can get that accomplished. And I think it'd be better for the city of Loudoun to have it internally.
We also have Travis Gray that can, that...
It's a resource.
Travis Gray being part of that management team.
He's planned to work already.
And he'll put that management team together, and I think that would include him.
It's already part of his job.
Travis does inspection and enforcement. Anything that would come before you as a member of the Planning Commission, Travis would simply bring to me, and I would see that process is properly taken care of.
I mean, this didn't surprise anyone. This has been talked about, you know, for a while. And I think, I think there's a good plan in place to...
What is the plan?
Let his office handle it. Let him handle it. He'll put his team together.
I just can't agree with a city manager, utility board manager, and a planner because there are just too many variables in there that won't work.
I think he's, he's got that option to put that together, and I think, I think he will.
Can we put it on there for a vote?
I guess the, the vote is to...
No, put it on the agenda for our meeting, is what I'm saying.
In two weeks?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? I mean, we're going to have to do something with it because it is going to either go up in price or, you know?
We got to July 1st.
So. My recommendation would be to let...
It would have been nice to have had a proposal if you all had already discussed that to bring before us. I don't...
Yeah, we've just bounced ideas off each other, yep, as far as...
Yeah. I don't like the idea of just the $25,000 to be used at will because there's going to be things, there will have to be a separate budget for that planning.
There is an interlocal agreement between the county and the city that defines the responsibilities that the county is supposed to fulfill. That, that agreement has to be addressed. I mean, it has not been addressed. It's been talked about in terms of budgetary numbers in the council meeting, but it's not like defunding the World Health Organization. There has to be, the contract between the city and the county has to be addressed. I've talked about this with Mayor Bradshaw, and he's getting with Attorney Bowman to draft us a letter. I think it's proper to wait and react to official correspondence.
Other than an email or anything like that from, so we haven't been notified legally from their attorney?
I'd like to put it up for a vote at our meeting.
And your proposal is to split the jobs, what you're...
We search for a planner slash manager. We have our attorney, Chris Frye, draw up what we're, what we're looking for, what we're needing, job responsibilities and duties, and we hire within the city within the first 30 days. If we don't find nobody, we look outside.
Does anyone, they'll agree with that? You want to have that on there for discussion?
Yeah, I think if we have options on the table, we need to see proposals for both. And, I mean, this is gonna, like I said, we're gonna have to have a whole other budget line for this planning mission.
Nope. Nicole, you can work those numbers up, Ken.
It would not be a separate function. This falls into the administrative function of the city budget. It's possible there's an additional line item, but possibly not. My, I agree that this is a big decision, and it should be very well mapped out of what the options are. Separating the city and utility manager appears simple at that level, but the organization structure is interwoven. We are joined at the hip with the utilities. And that has proven to be very beneficial. We've had a lot of substantial cost savings, the city and utilities. We use the same software system. I think there is a point in time when we can successfully separate, but it would be better, from my observation, it would be better done in a period of time and not immediately.
How, how are they going to change the structure?
Because I serve as city recorder and for the utilities. Who do I report to? Director of Sports Services serves both the city and the utilities. Who does that person report to? Have you ever worked for two bosses at the same time? Who do you serve? That would be my question. And again, this is my observation I want to offer to you as counsel. It's your decision, and I'm glad to put it in any, any way you want to see it, but those are some considerations.
You're the city recorder, you're going to work for the city and the utilities anyway. No matter how we split it up, it's still going to be the same responsibility.
How should I designate my time between two, two different people who have different demands? As it is now, where it's joined, we're able to prioritize and focus on what needs to be taken care of. I would say from planning matters, it works actually very, very well because one of the things that was implemented this year by Manager Ross is before a plat goes to the Planning Commission, which up until now has been downtown, they would just take the plat down there, and the utility department might find out about it in a few months. The city might find out about it at a different time. And he said, no, before you get a plat, we need to sign off on it, the city and the utilities, to make sure the utilities are in place, to make sure the city services are appropriate before it ever goes to you. So in that way, it makes perfect sense for all three to be coordinated through one person. And we can handle the administrative burden by delegating to the tenant. That's been the idea.
And that's where that planner responsibility, they would come to you, or they would go to the utility. This is what's in the works. What do we need to do? What's our step? I'm saying if we had a planner, manager, that it would still come, it would still go to the utilities. It's based on what kind of job description we give them.
It's, there's just less opportunity for something to fall through the cracks or get, for a developer to get bounced around to three different people. They have one point of contact to the city and the utilities. They have one point of contact rather than three different people they have to go see, or even two different people that they have to see. And in that way, it's a higher level of service to encourage investment in our community. And again, I want to, this is an observation, so take it for what it's worth without.
Yeah. It just, it scares me that we're going to have a manager, planager, planner, and utility board wearing the same pants. There's just too much, too many variables in there that could...
You can always change it until, until you try that. And, I mean, I think he's more than capable to do it, and you can always implement that if you see it's not working.
We're talking about the coordination of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And the approval of plats. If this stayed with the county for the next 20 years, every plat would be brought to me anyway.
I think it makes perfect sense to merge the ones together for, like you said, a smoother transition of getting approval on things.
I think this is wasteful. I think it's a poor use of taxpayer dollars. And I think it boils down to personalities. And I don't think there's any business judgment or leadership going on here.
I'd feel like it put on the agenda.
Tim, can I address your question about having it coordinated through one person? I would, I'm concerned about having one person handling it like this. Three years ago, our structure, there were these islands, and one person would be responsible for something, and only one person knew how to do that job. Our accounting department is an example of a complete reorganization. And yes, I have my role in it, but there are two other, there's at least one other person in the department. There are two people who know how to do every job. So I think that's the goal here, is to have that overlap in place so that everything continues to function no matter what going forward. And it's a higher level of service to the community, but it's valid for it. And thank you for bringing that up.
Any further discussion? Few points. Is there any action we need to take on that for two weeks? Councilman Brewster's requested it be put on the agenda. Do you want to put it on there to make a decision on that?
I think with all these changes, we're no mere approval in the budget.
Right.
I think there's too many variables going on right now. I'm not comfortable with the budget at this point, but, I mean, we still haven't gotten anything from the county.
I think it'd be prudent to wait 60 to 90 days before making a decision like this.
Okay.
I think there's just a lot of variables for us to discuss what we've discussed tonight and then put stuff out for Jason to look up and get figures on and Nicole to get figures on. If we don't vote on the budget, it doesn't, the world doesn't stop. It just carries on the way it was, correct?
Do you need to approve the tax rate?
Yeah.
And you have to have a budget to do that, otherwise it's a continuing budget.
You can have these things we've talked about. You'll have them ready for...
And what I would like to see is us vote on the budget next, in two weeks, if there's a change.
Planner.
The mechanics of how my proposal would move through this system is you would see it simply in the form of a pay scale amendment where the three to four people impacted by these duties on a monthly basis would receive additional compensation.
You'd bring that...
And it's not new money. It's money you've already allocated.
Yes, right. And maybe during that time, we'll get the official notification from Mayor Bradshaw.
I think you probably got it this evening.
We haven't got it yet. Okay. Any opposing comments?
That's going to be put on the agenda, right?
No.
Why?
We're going to, we're going to delay, I think, for 60, 90 days till we hear from...
That has nothing to do with...
Right now, we still have an interlocal agreement with the county.
No, we don't. It ends July the 1st.
We need to be notified by them, their attorney.
You got the email, Jeff.
Yeah, I got an email.
Folks, if you want this town run through this man's back pocket, continue down the path he sets before you. I run a collaborative organization. We have department heads that work together in unison. I am no dictator.
Would you repeat that?
And to be captured that way as me consolidating power, I take great offense to because I take a great amount of pride in, in serving this organization through the ethical canons of ICMA.
Yes. Can he, I did remove off the agenda department reports and council member reports because there's no sense in giving those in two meetings. We'll give those at the regular meeting if you have Planning Commission reports or solid waste commission reports, because a lot of times in a workshop, we haven't met, so you really don't have anything to report. Anyone have any closing comments from council? Any department heads that have any closing comments? Anyone? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all for coming.